Like in the meeting with somebody's office.
Good morning, and I want to welcome you all to our Rain County Board of Supervisors meeting. This is our June 27th meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask Craig Slay if he would say a prayer for us.
Yes, sir. I'll call him as we pray. Father, thank you for your presence here with us. Thank you for your, uh, the power that you give to us, Lord. The, uh, the sense of your presence here, Lord, the ability that we have, the cause of the skills, uh, Lord, the, uh, the talents that you provided these men. And I pray, Father, that they will be able to use those this morning for your glory. Father, that you will give them wisdom and discernment that they need. Lord, that, uh, that the time that we shared it here together will be effective, Lord. It'll be, uh, useful, uh, for the, uh, continuing benefit of our community. Father, thank you for the fact that we can participate in our government, and we don't take that for granted at all, Lord. Thank you for that. Father, I pray that our first responders, we kept safe today, and they'll be brought home to their families and brought safe again.
Amen. All right, let's adjourn to the Planning Commission meeting. And wow, already on the board.
Good morning.
Hey, can I interrupt you just for a second? Somebody said it was your birthday. Is it your birthday? I'm not worried about Tim, but happy birthday to you. Yeah, well, Tim will be all right. Tim will be all right.
Hey, hey, mine was yesterday.
Well, happy birthday, Steve.
Yeah, I didn't get any.
Yeah, mine's eight, mine's in September, just put it on your thing.
Well, I don't know about technically or anything else, I really hadn't.
Sorry about that.
We're wasting time.
Yeah, let's roll.
I'm sorry, but nobody, nobody's recognized your birthday, so I just kinda, I'm sorry about that.
If it was Bob's, I guarantee we wouldn't have.
Yeah, it would've been the first thing on the agenda, yeah, if it was Bob's.
All right, let's go.
Make a motion, we approve of May 30th minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the, uh, May 30th minutes, second by Daniel. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed, or any opposed? Motion passes, old business.
Okay, so today we have, um, two items under old business, set, under the old business section. Um, and hearings regarding the purpose today, the public hearings, they're only for the board of members related to that. First one is the conditional use permit for late construction at 136 Granton Farm Road. Uh, this property is located at the very end of Granton Farm Road. This is a 154 acre parcel of land that's zoned RE1A. They're seeking the conditional use permit to mine four acres of this parcel. That's an aerial view of the property. Their application states that the dirt will be used solely for the Highway 49 construction project. Uh, they're proposing hours of operation as Monday through Saturday, 24 hours a day. They estimate the mining operation would end in May of 2020. And we have received a copy of the certificate of permit coverage that was issued by DEQ. That DEQ permit shows an expiration date of March 31st of 2023. These are views of that property. And this is where it comes back out to White Road. And then these are just views from both directions, pulling out onto White Road, looks.
Oh, there's some stars. You see the white thing on there?
Well, I'm sorry. And then these are surrounding properties. My clicker's not working today, so I'm having trouble, I'm sorry.
I assume this is gonna be going through Flowood. I mean Flowood, I meant Florence, Florence.
The whole route, I, I believe, will.
To get to 49, yes. Can, can we? I say table it, just push this back until Jared gets in here, 'cause it is in his district.
Do you actually have it on your agenda for the actual work meeting?
Later today. Okay, all right, that's good, let's roll.
That also applies to the next, next matter that you can see here.
All right.
Yeah, so the second old business item is the Fleetway Market Conditional Use Permit at 4136 Highway 471. You'll remember this property is located on the corner of Highway 471 and Highway 43. Uh, this is a, um, 4.13 acre parcel, it's zoned C2. That's an aerial view of the property. And then, uh, Mr. Morris has been working on, um, uh, getting some new renderings and things, based on some comments from the neighborhood. And this is the revised site plan, um. Yeah, I'm sorry. He's, um, kind of changed the location of the building and turned it where it faces Highway 43. Uh, he's downsized it, and he decided to do away with the proposed car wash, uh, which enabled him to put a 50-foot buffer along this south property line where it joins the residential use and the residential zone. And he's gonna put, uh, trees in here, you know, kinda do heavily, little wooded area with some trees. And, uh, he also got the, uh, traffic analysis report back, and it was recommended to install turn lanes, a left and a right turn lane here on Highway 43, due to the increased speed of traffic on the 43 side. These are the, uh, renderings that he's presented. It's gonna be an all brick building, um, and the colors are gonna match, uh, a building that he has, already has in Gluckstadt.
Actually, the water doesn't get as high as it looks there, that's a shadow.
Oh, well, that's not a very good picture up there, I'm sorry. Y'all can't tell too much from those, but y'all have had these pictures in your packets, so you've seen them. Uh, yeah, and, um, also, um, Mr. Franco has had an opportunity to review those plans, and y'all had, you know, his report or his comments on that as well. Uh, these are views of that existing property, the way it is now. These are from the 471 side. And this is from the 43 side. And this is a view of that house, house that sits to the south, that will be behind it. And these are across on 471.
Where, where are we in this process? Are we getting ready to prove architectural, or what?
I don't know if we're approving architectural, we gotta grant the, uh, the approval, conditional use, to do that at that location. So, architectural deal will be another step down the line.
Yes, because, you know, he just wanted to make sure he could be, be approved for the use before he goes further and gets detailed drawings and that kind of thing. Oh, he did have a letter from the Water Association also, and there will be no negative impact, um, they said in the letter.
Are we incorporating Carl's recommendations? I mean, he had some, like the dumpster brick and metal gates and stuff like that, or what?
When we get, I think when we get to that point.
I mean, he needs, I think that's part of the truth, he needs to be aware of that, that's gonna add cost, obviously, and he just needs to be aware that that's what we're going to, uh, address.
I think that's kinda good, the, the hearing side coming up and about, however long it takes us to get down to it, so, yeah, today, I would think.
All right. Let's look at new considerations.
All right, so we have one item today under new considerations. It's a conditional use permit for Michelle Toller at 100 Castle Woods Boulevard. This property is located on the west side of Castle Woods Boulevard. Ms. Toller is seeking a conditional use permit to operate an adult daycare in an existing building on this property. Uh, she, her business is certified as a Medicaid waiver provider for adults with intellectual or developmental disabilities. That's an aerial view of that property. The maximum number of adults in the daycare program will be, uh, between 35 and 40. Uh, the hours of operation, uh, will be Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's a 1.40 acre parcel, and it's zoned R1B. This is a view going into that property there, off of Castle Woods Boulevard. That's the front of the building. This is the rear. And then these are surrounding properties. And Mrs. Toller is here today, if y'all have any questions for her.
All right, if we don't have any questions, then are we ready to, uh, take action?
Set the public hearing, please.
All right, it's in Daniel's district.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right. Daniel makes a motion to set the public hearing. Me, Jay, and Jared second it, however you wanna pick that, at the same time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Gentlemen, under item six of the Planning Commission agenda, you've got your nuisance property hearings. The first item, A, is the Natalie and Clint Moore Nuisance Property Consideration at 304 Helmsley Drive. This is a District 2 parcel, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If anyone is here to speak on the matter of the Natalie and Clint Moore Nuisance Property, you can be prepared to come forward.
All right, so, um, we received this complaint in May of this year, um, about rubbish and debris. This is in the Castle Woods subdivision. These pictures were taken June the 3rd. Uh, the mail was received. We've not been contacted by anyone.
I was thinking my eyes are going bad. It's probably part of.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
The pictures just don't get to me. And then these are the new pictures that were taken, uh, yesterday. Looks like some of the grass might have been cut. But not much else.
Is there anyone here to speak on the Natalie and Clint Moore Nuisance Property Consideration? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, if it be appropriate, take action.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to declare it a nuisance and forward it to the justice court.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item B is the Houston Stapleton Estate Nuisance Property, 5216 Highway 18. This is District 3. Uh, at this time, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If anyone is here on behalf of the Houston Stapleton Estate, please be prepared to come forward.
All right, so we've received complaints on this, um, several times throughout the years. These pi, these pictures actually date back to 14, showing, you know, what it looked like.
14.
14, yes, sir, these are just the beginning pictures, we have new ones. It's a, a, a dilapidated manufactured home.
Was that a calf?
There's cows and not their pasture.
Yes, sir.
All right, and then these are the new pictures that were taken on the 26th. The mail was received, um, and we did receive a call saying they would, um, work to get it torn down. I believe they may have started making a small amount of progress. And I'm not sure if anybody's here today or not, maybe, maybe so.
Good morning.
Good morning, come on up.
My name is Jeanette Banks, I, um, live at 174 Chasewood Drive, Jackson, Mississippi. I am the daughter of Houston Stapleton. Did you want me to continue?
Sure.
Okay. This property actually sits in the pasture where we keep, where my brother keeps cows. Now, I had not known that there had been notices about it, my brother called me, and we have been looking for someone to tear the property down. So, what I'm requesting this morning is additional time, if that's, you know, feasible for us to do that, if that's what we want, the property torn down. But it has been vacant a long time, but again, it is in the middle of a pasture where cows are kept.
Yeah, we'll, uh, I, I want to go ahead and declare it a nuisance, so we, we don't have to come back to the staff, but we'll go an additional 60 days or to work with, with Renee at her office. But yeah, I have no problem, we'd greatly appreciate y'all taking care of that, be a huge help. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna make, Mr. President, make a motion to declare it a nuisance, we'll give the, give opportunity, 60 days to work with the, the board office, the, the board office.
All right, Bob's made a motion to declare it nuisance with a 60-day review by Renee's office, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And for the record, that, that hearing is closed. Uh, item C, Mr. President, is the William and Wanda Patrick Nuisance Property at 524 Ridge Crest Drive. Uh, this is a District 3 property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If there's anyone here on behalf of the William and Wanda Patrick Nuisance Property Matter, please be prepared to come forward.
All right, so we got complaints on this property starting back in January of this year. Uh, rubbish and debris, weeds and grass. These pictures were taken on the 19th of June, showing the condition of the property. And this is in Cedar Ridge subdivision.
It sounded like there was a car in that garage last time I drove by.
Uh, yes, sir, there was. It was actually a neighbor parking his vehicle there, and then once I found out who it was, I got him to stop.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna state your name, I'm sorry.
Uh, William Patrick. That's my house at 524 Ridge Crest.
I'm sorry, Renee, I just kinda cut you out in the middle of the thing, you got current photos or whatever?
These are the, these are the new photos, he has, uh, cut the grass, um.
Some bad pictures.
They are, in fact, Wayne must took those.
Must've been cloudy that day, Wayne.
I think, I think it's a projector, I think.
Maybe.
Maybe projectors, I brought him over for something.
There's some problems, but I'm not sure.
I will have to depend on, have you been, you been back out there since and taken, is it, have we got it back to where we want it, uh?
I went yesterday. He's cut the grass, but the weeds and everything going up on the house, there's debris.
We're gonna go ahead and declare it a nuisance, Mr. Patrick, I'm gonna give you about 60 more days, kinda like the Stapleton, we're gonna make it 30 this time. And that's pretty something that can be done relatively quickly, to go ahead and get this thing cleaned up. Uh, you're making good progress, and we're gonna go ahead, press, finish doing what you wanna do, or doing what we've requested you do, and we're just kinda working from there.
I will, uh, I'm just trying to acquire a hedge trimmer and stuff like that, so I can clean the front of the house up. And then, I have a chainsaw and everything, uh, to clean to the ditch off the fence line and everything in the house and stuff. I was just, I'm out of town during the week working and whatnot, so it's, it's mainly in the range.
30 days, you take 30 days enough to get it?
Yes, sir, I've got, I've got today and tomorrow off of work before, and, well, till Sunday, so yes, sir, I'm gonna, that's, that's what I'm voting on.
Good trimmer won't take it long.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it's just, it's, yes, sir, I apologize for it.
Is the house livable?
Yes, sir, well, I've, I've got to get the water and, uh, power inspected, to get everything turned back on inside the house. I lost my mother to, and, well, when I moved in with them to take care of her, the property has got into this situation.
You live there?
Uh, no, sir, I do not right now, 'cause there's no power and water. Uh, I'm still with my father, so.
Oh, I understand.
Yes, sir, he's, it's just elderly.
Mr. President, I'm gonna make a motion to declare it a nuisance, 30-day review.
Second. All right. Bob's made a motion.
Just so you know, we want you to keep it up going forward, too.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir, it, it, I've actually talked to someone to come maintain the property for me until I, uh, but I'm gonna get all the paperwork and stuff, try to get, so I can get the house inspected and start running the property out. I apologize, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, uh, to declare it a nuisance, give it a 30-day review. Jared seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
For the record, that hearing is closed. Item D, Mr. President, is the Amma Taylor Nuisance Property at 155 Front Street, this is District 1. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. If there's anyone here on behalf of Amma Taylor, uh, please prepare to come forward.
All right, so, um, we've gotten complaints on this property in the past, but the most recent was in May of this year. People living in campers, rubbish and debris. Also saying there was no sewer, and that they were running, uh, extension cords. These pictures were taken in May of this year. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Aye? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Can you say your name and where you live?
Mike Haney, 161 Front Street, Star, Mississippi.
You live here?
Sir?
Do you live here?
I live in the middle house.
Who, who is Ann, um, Amma Taylor?
That's my mom.
That's your, okay, all right.
She is bed bound, on hospice, been there for, since 2008. I take care of her. Uh, 2013, I became disabled, in an automobile accident, broke my back. I have a lot of projects going on, and I, I used to own thrift stores. And I keep that big house, one built in 1896, that one, it's completely full. And I'm not able to go rent another building for another thrift store until my mom passes away. Then I will be able to run another thrift store. I'm gonna need to, since I'm disabled, dead on disability. And I buy camper trailers a lot cheaper than I can storage units. Like, that 30-foot one I just got, I paid 400 bucks for it. And I'm having it restored. I moved it across the street, so people won't run over cars. I knew that was becoming a problem.
Yeah.
And I built a roof on it, 'cause the top leaks. And to make it more permanent, I'm having it restored right now. Building, uh, that right there on the right corner is, uh, a shed built out of wood fencing and tarp on top to get everything out of the camper trailer, to get it restored.
We, we got several different violations, zoning and different things. I mean, that's kinda like running a commercial business, even though you're not selling, but it's.
I'm not selling anything. I ain't even doing a yard sale.
Well, storage facilities are a commercial business.
But it's my stuff, my personal stuff.
Yes.
That, when I open up a thrift store, again, when my mom passes away, I gotta have merchandise to sell inside a store, commercial building.
But you can't just keep building storage and accumulating stuff, accumulating stuff for one day. And also, it's also been some, um, also been reported that, I don't guess those, but there are some people living in some of these, uh, travel trailers.
Nobody's living in a trailer, those need to be restored, so I can put merchandise in it.
You have, you have lights running to some?
That, well, the big one. 'Cause it get hot now, I put air conditioner in there. Mostly working at night, for the cooler.
This has been something that's, it's not the first time this, I mean, you weren't having, like, garage sales or yard sales or something down there.
Yeah, y'all stopped me on that.
And then you went down the highway, and we're doing them down the highway.
Yeah, y'all stopped me on that, too.
Well, I'm afraid we're gonna stop you on this, too. I mean, you just, you just can't, you keep piling stuff in there, and there's, there is, I do know there's more traffic coming down there, for whatever reason, so it sounds like you still may be selling stuff from down there. There's traffic coming down there, and they're, 'cause they're pulling into other people's homes, looking where do we, where, where you are. So I know there's people coming in there.
How can there be more people coming in there, we're at the dead end street in the middle of the woods.
Those are coming in, they're coming into your place, is what I'm trying to tell you. They're coming into your place.
I got people working on my property.
Yeah. Well.
I got a landscaper gonna come in and do some landscaping on my property. And he's not gonna charge me anything.
Well, you're gonna probably need him to come down and start cleaning up some of it. That's, that's, that's where this is going. And we can't keep making it a storage place and moving, uh, travel trailers in there, just to store, as storage, as you're saying. The travel trailer's not made, built to be a storage unit, a portable storage unit. And you keep accumulating all this stuff, and I understand you're gonna have a thrift store one day, and I, I hope you do one day. But we, you just can't keep building everything, ha, uh, storing it down here, uh, the whole time until that day comes. I mean, you got more now than you could fill a thrift store up with. Hey, Renee, did you have any pictures from our tour, any other residents, or can you, can you see another house?
Yeah, you can, from the property picture, but I don't know about in the pictures, um.
I mean, these old.
Do people live on this road?
Huh?
Do people live on this road?
Yes.
Well, I, personally, if I lived on this, I would want my neighbor to have his property looking like you do. And that's why you're here today. We need to get you to clean up your property. You don't need all these campers laying around everywhere, you know, this truck over here with the.
My truck, my big truck is broke down.
No, I'm talking about the one that has the tarp on it, you know?
Yeah, it's broke down, and, oh, you're gonna add on storage shed.
We don't need to add on any more storage sheds.
The what?
We don't need to be adding on anything else to store.
I make motion declared nuisance.
All right, we got a motion to, uh, declare it a nuisance, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
We'll talk to the judge after this, and let him explain to you what you need to do. So you can talk to the judge after this, and explain to him what you need to do.
Okay, for the record, that matters, that public hearing is closed. Uh, the next item is item E. Uh, we'll open a, a public hearing on the Brian McMillan Nuisance Property at 215 Chestnut Drive. This is a District 5 matter. Uh, again, that public hearing is now open, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate. I, I believe that there may be several folks who are here to speak on that matter, thank you. Uh, and they'll, they'll have an opportunity. For the record, I'd like to ask, is Brian McMillan present, or anyone on behalf of Brian McMillan? We had gotten word that Mr. McMillan had, did not intend to come to the hearing, and so I just wanna make that clear on the record, that he was, uh, he received his notice to be here, and has, for whatever reason, chosen not to participate. So Renee, if you'll demonstrate, please. Uh, those who are here to speak on the Brian McMillan nuisance matter, please be prepared to come forward and state your name and address the record.
All right, so this property is in the Oak Grove subdivision. Uh, these pictures were taken April the 19th. Uh, we've just gotten complaints about the condition of the property. We've had complaints here before.
What we farming this year? Corn, last time I saw the picture was corn, I don't.
All right, and so these, these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday, um.
What, he's got a garden?
Yeah, he's growing stuff in the front yard there, that's boxes right there.
I tell you, you know, he slipped this in through our ordinance, and I think we need to change it, just to take care of this. I don't think we have anybody else in the county doing their garden in their front yard.
I think I'm having tomatoes and things on, it's probably.
Well, not to this extent, Jared.
Well, I mean, what about, what am I looking at?
He's throwing corn out there, man.
Where is the corn?
Well, he pulled it all up the other day.
Next stalk's a corn.
He had some this year, too.
Harvest is already. I don't know if he's farming now or not, I don't know, we're fixing to find out.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just looking at what I'm looking at.
For the purpose of establishing the record, we, uh, we made it a specific point to invite the neighbors who are directly surrounding this property to come forward and to, uh, to speak on this issue and how it may be affecting them and, and their possession of their property value. If you'll come forward, please state your name and address.
My name is Kristen Dagelman, and I live at 218 Chestnut Drive, which is diagonal to this property. And I have pictures that show the corn almost to the roof, or the siding of the house.
Those were last year's, was it last year's crop?
But he had some this year, didn't he?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, he's already pulled it up?
Yeah.
Pulled it up a few days ago.
And then here's corn stalks around.
Did he share with the community?
Oh, you do.
He didn't share, did he share with the community?
He did not.
He did not?
He's not a sharer.
He is not.
Not cop share?
And what is this right here, is this, what's it all bundled up here for?
His corn stalk that he did. He put it on his mailbox.
Oh.
And then this is at night, it's from many Jackson International Airport.
Yeah, it does look like, uh, like something's gonna land there. Here, you enjoy this.
Those, um, yard statues are actually, like, not even around by the state. They're, um, PVC pipes, as you can see in this picture, like, that, those little yard squirrels with the ball.
She needs to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, come up, please, and that, tell where you're from.
I'm living directly next door to this property at 217 Chestnut. Like I said, the little squirrels that you see right here in the front, like, that's PVC pipe, that's not even like the state that the, that they came on. Um, also, he's put up a fence in between our homes, I have pictures of. It's actually quite dangerous, because there's, like, nails hanging out of it. And I spent like $2,600 putting in a flower bed next to it, just to cover it up, it's like eight feet tall.
Yeah.
I have pictures of it.
Is the fence okay if you just cut the nails out of it?
No, the boards. No, the boards are all like mismatched. It looks like somebody just threw it together. I mean, somebody that's unqualified to-
What'd y'all do to this guy?
I must not invite him over for Thanksgiving.
We believe he's from up north.
All right, now which side is this? This is his side or yours?
That's his side, but there is some speculation that it might be actually on my property, but I'm not real sure.
Oh, we might get you in here then for nuisance.
Possibly. I would love to take it down, trust me.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can see how terribly it's-
Yeah, that's-
So y'all, y'all good?
Yeah.
All right, thank y'all for coming. We're gonna declare this nuisance.
If, if I may, I'm gonna get them all to state their name and address for the record. Ma'am, I don't think you gave your name.
My name is Ann Orr, and I live at two seventeen Chestnut.
Hey, you may want your pictures back.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I might have taken a shot of them.
Take your scrapbooking or something. Hang on, take these right here.
We really appreciate y'all coming today.
Yeah.
On the fence-
We appreciate anything y'all can do for us.
If he just leveled it all up?
My name is Renee Gilbo, and I live right across the street from this, uh, two sixteen Chestnut Drive. Uh, and, and I'm not trying to point any fingers at anybody or anything like this, but, uh, I found out about the last, I found out about the last hearing when he was in here berating my wife and everything. I found out about it through a friend that saw it on YouTube, and I saw the hearing on YouTube.
Yeah.
You know, I, I-
We didn't even know-
We didn't even know about the last hearing.
When was the last hearing?
It was a year ago.
A year ago.
It's been a couple of years.
March the sixteenth.
Sorry, Nick Green, you wanna tell us who you are and your address?
Yeah, I was waiting on everybody. Kenneth David Orr, two seventeen Chestnut.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, first appreciate y'all coming, and, uh, I make motion to clear this nuisance.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Jay Bishop, declare it a nuisance, seconded by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
For the record, that matter, that public hearing is closed. Uh, item F, I'm looking over at Dwayne, cause I may need to get a little updated information on this one. But we'll go ahead and open, open the public hearing on the Jimmy Shed nuisance property review at one twenty-three Pole Bridge Road. This is District Four property. Uh, on this particular matter, the reason it's before you on review is that you had already declared this property to be a nuisance property. Mr. Shed was brought before the Rank County Justice Court and was found guilty of, uh, allowing a nuisance on his property without remediation and has been incarcerated now since that finding. Uh, and he is still-
Incarcerated when he was, uh, when y'all brought him, brought him from there two years-
Wait a minute.
Wait, wait, hold on, we'll give you a chance. Uh, he's, he is still incarcerated, the justice court judge. My understanding is that the justice court judge who rendered the, the guilty finding uh, and incarcerated him is going to conduct a review tomorrow. And so they are looking for some direction, uh, on the matter. Uh, it, obviously, it's hard for Mr. Shed to remediate the, personally to remediate the condition of the property while he's incarcerated, so, uh, in-
But he's not incarcerated because of the nuisance property.
Yes, sir. This time he is incarcerated because of the nuisance.
This time, this time.
Yes, sir.
But we had to bring him from the jail over here when we first started this.
That's correct.
We had another problem.
Yes, sir, he was a violation for over.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a, it's a, it's a twin issue here. He may still be serving time on a prior charge. I don't know for sure. He may have, uh, he may have cleared that particular charge already, but he's currently incarcerated, uh, at least on the nuisance consideration in addition to whatever other charge may be out there.
Well, I'll be honest, I don't wanna be beating him. Uh, I just assume, give him an opportunity to clean it, a very short window of opportunity, personally, but-
So that's, that's the purpose for the review. Obviously, someone is here on behalf of Mr. Shed, so I would suggest if it's amenable to the board that we give her an opportunity to share any additional information that may be pertinent to your decision. So I'd ask, ma'am, if you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record and, and how you are connected to Mr. Shed, please.
My name's Kathy Bone, um, one, two, one, two, three Pole Bridge Road. Uh, Brandon, uh, Jim and I, we've been together six years, um, he's Beyonce. Um, we was given the property originally, um, his mother passed there, um, and it was in Martha Bates Estate. Um, Jim's lived there all his life. We were given it originally, um, as a Christmas gift, to do what we could with it. Um, to yet have we received anything, a deed. But so therefore, we're not able to go further with any of our plans that we had originally started five years ago. Um, we're dead in the water, we can't even get a power pole, cause his brother won't write us up. Give us a clear deed. Um, uh, we're just dead in the water. Um, then this issue comes up with the camper. I know the law, the ordinance, you're only supposed to be in it a hundred eighty, eighty days. But if you have nowhere to go, um, we have nowhere to go. We put everything we had in, in the land and the building materials that we have there. And we can't get a clear deed. And now y'all want us to take all that stuff, throw it away. I got, we got sciffrids board. Sciffrids board is thirteen dollars a foot. We got some of them that is sixteen, eighteen foot long that we intended to use in our house. We've got new boards there. I mean, all this is supposed to be cleaned up. What are we supposed to do with it?
What, what's all, what's all the stuff though?
No, sir, I, I understand, I see y'all that. We could go in houses and we clean it up and we, it does not look like that now.
These are the new pictures.
Oh, those are new pictures?
These are the new pictures.
That I've been doing by myself, that he's been in there.
Yeah, it's a lot better.
Um, I've, I've just have to glides down, um, uh, we did, went twenty-two feet with it by hand. Um, I just need him home to help me.
Well, you know, I, I didn't realize y'all were living in a camper. Um, you know, you can't do that.
I understand that, but, um-
You really don't need to stay there now, actually.
I understand that, but where am I supposed to go, sir?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I know you can't stay there.
Well, you, you can park a camper at different parks.
Not that model, you cannot.
Man, I don't know about that model, but I mean, a camper, there are places that you can put a camper, uh, along-
Our DJ was only just saying it temporary, cause I, I mean, I don't wanna live in a camper all my life and to build a house on the back where the, his mother's house burnt. Because the septic and all's down and everything's down. Um, uh, but his brother won't give us nothing and it, it, it says that it's ours to go ahead. You can't even get a power pole, we can't even get electricity, because we don't have a, a deed.
What's the answer gonna be though if he's not gonna give you a deed to it?
Uh, I, we gotta get a lawyer when Jimmy gets out. The first thing we gotta do is go talk to a lawyer, a landlord, um, and get the land situated. Um, and go from there.
Well, he's letting you leave the camper there?
Uh, he, he knows everything that's going on there. Yes, sir, he does.
What's the deal about the camper? Can't we, what if she moved it?
The, the camper's been there since two thousand fourteen. That's when this first started, was in two thousand fourteen.
We're giving the land.
And-
You've given the land?
Yes, his brother gave us land as a Christmas gift.
But you don't have it, but you's not-
Don't have a clear deed, no. A handshake and a dinner table.
But he won't, but he won't give you a clear deed, but he gave you the land?
Yes, sir.
But he didn't really give you the land then?
No, he did not. It's one of those things that looks good in front of people, but don't, um, when you get down to it.
All right, well, Jay, this is your baby. No, it isn't. Steve's your baby.
Actually, it's fine. Yeah. Craig, explain to me what do we know about the court and incarceration and, oh, do we? I mean, is the judge saying if y'all wanna give him some time to get it cleaned up, I will allow it?
Yes, sir. What, uh, what the justice court judge, I, I spoke directly to him, and he was inquiring, uh, what would be the position of the board. I think his feeling is that we ought to give him an opportunity to, uh, to remediate the nuisance by some sort of short reprieve, followed by his having to return on the judge's order at a date certain to give an account. In other words, it'd be like us doing a review, Steve. Uh, with Renee responsible to sort of oversee that. The judge would essentially allow our community development office to monitor a thirty day period. And then, at the end of that thirty day period, there would be a report back to the justice court judge rather than they come to you guys. And if the property has been remediated, then the judge will release it. If not, he'll put it back in jail.
Okay.
And it'll be up to Renee's office to declare that the situation has been resolved or not.
Okay.
Uh, and that will be the tale of the tape. But I, I think he, we, we talked about a thirty day window-
Yeah.
-where he's released to go and remediate the nuisance.
All right.
Can I ask something? How is, um, um, how are, how are we held or he held responsible for the land when we don't even have a clear something to the land?
I suspect that the judge feels like you do. You may have some clouds on that deed or some obstacles that you-
Clearly occupying it and the issue is-
And been occupying it for, Jimmy's been there for ten years.
You've created the, the mess, I guess, what he's saying.
Yes.
Even though you don't own it, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, the mess has got there, but you're gonna need to see the mess that was there prior to us getting there.
I, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. We've cleaned up, um, a good bit. The house had burnt there.
Yeah, all, all that is, is, could be factual, but the truth is-
That what's there is ours, yes, sir, and we're responsible for it, the cleanup.
Right.
I understand that.
What's your question? You, you can't have it both ways. I, I'd like to state this clearly for the record. Uh, one is not allowed to have it both ways. We can't both claim an interest in the property and then proceed to treat it as our own property and then throw up our hands and say, hey, it's not my property, so that mess must be somebody else's.
Oh, I wouldn't be doing it, but what I'm saying is, um-
Okay, wait a minute, if he, if, if they don't have a clear deed to it-
I, I suspect the judge has researched that, and there's something like a quick claim deed with some real clouds.
But I mean, if he doesn't, then he, the, the brother would be responsible too, wouldn't he?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
If he has to sell on the land.
Technically, yes, but, but it all goes back to the fellow, what's causing the mess.
Right.
Uh, and so there would be some exposure there regardless.
Right.
At the end of the day, the justice court judge has incarcerated the person that he believes is most responsible for creating the disaster.
You know, the issue I have here is that I don't really see a willingness to do anything different. I don't think thirty days is gonna make a difference in this situation.
I've done a difference in, uh, two weeks.
All right.
I don't, I don't think you're ready to move this trailer off this property and move it-
If his brother would give us a deed, we'd have a, I'd pull a permit to build a house back there.
But that's not on mine.
I understand all that, but if not, then I'll burn it down and we'll leave.
Don't, don't do that. You may have additional problems. That's like a ten year statute.
Yeah, and we're, we're-
Don't burn it down. I'm gonna make a motion that we give y'all thirty days. I'll be, you have touched me sensitive. Uh, thirty days, and this isn't cleaned up, and we're gonna report back to the judge.
So what you're saying, all of it has to go-
Well, that trailer-
The trailer?
Oh, oh, yes.
Okay, so what about our building materials and stuff in the back? If we have it nice and neat?
Well, okay, is that a storage building back there?
Yes, sir, and from the storage building down to our apartment line.
Was it already there?
No, sir, we, I brought that in.
I was gonna say, what's the building material in the storage building, but I don't know, you gonna, uh, do you wanna-
Put it in that storage building. Do, I mean, that's okay. Just clean it up. Get the junk and the trailers and stuff out of there and, uh, stop crying and don't feel sorry, just go do it.
How hard is it to pull a permit on something that's not ours? You have to get that settled first, the land is you, right?
You gotta get it cleaned up first.
Oh, yes, sir, I, okay.
And that's your big deal right now, is get it cleaned up. You got thirty days.
Yes.
They're gonna monitor it, and then that's gonna be the end of it. We're not gonna, we're not gonna look at it again, okay? All right, I make that motion that-
The judge is gonna let him out.
Yeah.
We're assuming that.
Yeah, that's up to the judge.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
All right, so I make that motion, we give them thirty days. Bob seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion, we adjourn to, uh, August first.
As you go.
We're coming back to your deal in the regular meeting.
Okay.
All right, Bob makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion passes. I would like to recognize some people that are here. Scott Crowdis, retired from our fire department out at Lake Harbor after, I don't know how many years of service, but him and his family have saved so many lives out there. They're the first ones at every call. Uh, they have dedicated, uh, family, their lives to first response. Scott, thank you. Scott's mother, Jackie, is also here. Thank y'all for coming, and thank you for your service, and I do look forward to working with you somewhere else. All right, let's move into, uh, our meeting. And, uh, we'll call this meeting to order, and first off, we'll have our public comments. Carl Franco?
Good morning.
Board.
Just wondering. Well, I've got a couple of things on, on my list, and top page is kind of a summary of where we're at on the construction projects. And it should be, uh, thank you, sir. There's a cost outline too that I'll go over. Just to start with, uh, item number one, where we're at today on these costs is, uh, and this is everything, the courthouse is at twenty million, five hundred fifteen thousand, twenty-four dollars and twelve cents. And, which is, uh, over the budget by four hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The misdemeanor is four million, three ninety-three, three twelve oh three, which is under the budget by six hundred thousand dollars. So there's a net in the twenty-five million dollar bond issue of approximately still two hundred thousand dollars remaining to the good. So where we're at, the misdemeanor facility is ninety-five percent complete. They anticipate completing it first part of August, possibly the end of July. The only thing holding them up is they're waiting on the beds to come in. And, uh, there'll be a change order I present to you today that has a couple of things in it. Uh, the first one is adding twenty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred sixty dollars to make modifications for different washers and dryers. Building was designed for certain washers and dryers, but, uh, it did not to the capacity the sheriff really needs. Uh, we found that out later, so there's a-
I think, then we, we start off, we were gonna keep the washing and cleaning in the other building and then it, we found that it would be better to, and, and that's why the commercial washers and dryers. Okay.
That was our understanding anyhow. We may misunderstand.
I think I was Raymond that's giving me a heads nod.
That's the way we approached it. Uh, the second thing is an add of twenty-nine fifty, and what, what that is, is over by the detention pond, they ran into, it's either the sewer or water line that wasn't on the survey, so the, the new line runs right into it. So in order to solve that, they've gotta put in a junction box. And then the third item is actually a credit of eighty-six hundred and seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. And that's been some discussions with your civil engineer and contractor and Mike, the road manager, about the paving in that west part of that access road. Uh, and so I think the county's deciding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, and him, y'all can do that, save that other money, and that's just the way to go. So, uh, that's what the change order, uh, for that project is. So it's a net of eighteen thousand, nine fifty-two. We still have sixteen thousand, some odd change left in contingency that we're not using right now. And if we don't use it, that will come back to the county. But we did a punch list Tuesday on that, which, on the inside of it, and there was very little items. So they're getting close to finishing that project. It's just the exterior site work that's finishing. Uh, the courthouse, I was over there this morning just checking it out. It's approximately sixty-five percent complete. Uh, they're not scheduled to complete it until first of October right now. There's, they're telling me they're trying to beat that schedule, but I think that's what I'm looking at. They're in there, they've got most of the sheet rock up, they're finishing it. They should be able to start painting soon. Uh, they're still continuously working on the exterior. Uh, there's a change order for that, number nine, to add a hundred thirty-five thousand, nine fifteen. And that's, that mostly is landscaping, uh, which we did as a change order, a hundred forty-one thousand, five sixty-five. Now, that's under what we had budgeted. We had budgeted a hundred fifty thousand, so that's approximately eight thousand under that. Uh, there's a small change order to add a buzzard for, uh, county prosecutor's secretary to buzz them in on that separate entrance. Uh, there's a credit, there's a five thousand, six hundred fifty thousand dollar credit. Uh, there's a credit. There's a five thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar credit. We were looking at, if you may remember, early on, we took out some of the stainless steel as a value engineering. This was some, some that just didn't get taken out, so we're taking it out now to save some money. There's no need to have it. So, uh, the change order there is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine fifteen. And like I say, that's mostly the landscaping, which was under the budget. We still have eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars left in the contingency allowance. And again, we don't anticipate using all that, so that should come back.
I bet we do.
Well.
From now to October.
Uh, we, we own, so we could, but as long as we don't find any more debris. And I, 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 I'm not gonna say they can't find anymore because they dug up most of it. There's not a whole lot more left room to find debris at this point. Uh, they do want an extension of twenty-eight days for that landscaping, uh, which is what their landscaping guy sent them, it would take to do it. And it may not take that long because while they're finishing up, once they get all the final grading done, they can start on the landscaping. Uh, but they've got to put in, uh, irrigation, that type of thing. There was one other little problem which they have not, they've been making me informed of, which I have not seen yet. But, you know, they ran, the city ran into a line that was there. I think it was a water line. And it's taken about thirty days for the city to get that corrected and put back together. And that kinda held it up in finishing their site work on the southeast part of the property, right down the corner of Timberline and North Street. So they may be asking for time on that because they've been notifying me of that. Chance for renovation, we should be finished with those plans in about thirty days, uh, finishing the drawings. Then we can, we can advertise to bid them after that, but I'm, I'm kinda waiting until we get closer to finishing the courthouse because they can't really move out of there until we get the courthouse finished. So, uh, there's a schedule there. The D H F building roofing, we've got all those drawings finished. All I need to do is get their advertisement to bridge it. We met yesterday with Mike and, uh, we've had discussions with Johnny Jones about the re-roofing on the E O C building. We still got about three more weeks to finish that. That's a more, if you're familiar with that building, it's more complicated, but I know there's an urgency. We think we've got a plan to go ahead and get the center part done quick. It may be done in phases to get it done without having to interrupt services there because I know elections are coming up and Mike stressed to us how important.
Is it going to cost us more to put this roof on as opposed to building a new building?
Uh, I'm not sure yet, Bob. I hadn't gotten the final estimate. It's gonna cost.
It just seems that way. Every time, you know, it's so complicated, you know, uh.
Doc, the reason why I really can't answer it because I don't know what's gonna go in, you know, how much goes into a new building and what size it's gonna be. I, if I knew that, I could tell you.
Certainly not more than to, to roof.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would, but, uh.
Roof wouldn't cost that much. Let me ask you, have they looked at? Huh?
If it's even close as building a new one, I'd just be a little suspicious.
I can't imagine it being anywhere.
I don't think, we talked about on that center section, putting a T P O, which is less expensive. You can't see it and it's more energy efficient. Then on the, the, uh, standing seam part, taking it off and going back that you can see with standing seam. Uh, I, you know, I imagine it's gonna be quarter million, three hundred thousand dollars to put that roof on.
Yeah, you can't build a new building for that.
I know that. I know.
We can't build a doghouse for that. What do you mean?
Yeah, you're right.
Look, have they looked at, and I saw, in fact, I saw the building that I had mentioned to you, uh, last week. Have they considered putting, uh, uh, a hip roof on what's there? And I've seen that done on flat top roofs because I removed the equipment off of it and I saw the finished product just the other day, coincidentally, after I had mentioned it to you. And it is a slick looking, uh, roof. And they, they came in there and put center supports and it pitched it right out.
We've talked about it. We need to do, if we're gonna look at that in more detail, we probably need to do a structural analysis. I, I don't know what the weight on that is, but I would assume the most economical ways to do it, like a wood truss system, you know, prefabricated, put that on, could stick frame it, but you still gotta support it at the end walls, which that's usually a fairly light structure.
Right.
But I will tell you what we've gotten into on some renovation projects in the past year that we didn't really anticipate is depending on the slope, wind, rain starts, it's not like it's a structural deal, but those live loads start having an effect on the rest of the building and over a period of like twenty years, start getting cracks and stuff in it.
In what?
Where, in the walls. Because what happens with, with the trusses, they start pushing out and if you don't have them, uh, if you don't have enough resistance from the existing wall.
I don't know who designed this. I just, like I said, removed the equipment. They changed where the equipment went and then, uh, I knew they were doing it and then I just happened to back.
We can, we can, we can certainly look into that, yeah.
It made a really nice looking roof. It got that flat roof off and it, it's got a, I don't know, if I'm gonna say a.
It, it will cost more than what we're planning on, what we're planning on doing in that center section.
Oh, well, now it's rapid. It's gonna cost more. I thought it'd be less costly.
Well, what we're planning in the center section is we can actually come over, uh, the existing metal roof. We don't have to take it off and we can re-roof that. They have a system that goes in those flutes and then you can put a coverboard and then the T P O. Uh, and it's, it's just, it's more economical than putting, than doing what you're suggesting. Now, long term, if you're gonna be in this building another twenty, thirty years and you wanna put a sloped roof on it, that may be something to look at. But it will cost more than what we're planning on doing right now.
Get that. I thought it would be cheaper. Or are you insinuating what we're doing now is not gonna last?
Yeah, let's go on, thank you. This is a short term, five years. You gotta be out of there, man.
The roof, the roofing system will be a fifteen, twenty year roof, roof system. Uh, so the roofing's gonna be there, but there's some, there's some potential other issues in that building. We hadn't looked at them all, but we're trying to clean some of that up under there without spending a ton of money. I mean, Mike's in there today. He might, I don't, I don't, do you know with other?
Watch it, Mike. Easy.
First off, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with Mr. Morrison. That was my first thing was, I, I think it should be against federal law to build a flat roof on any commercial building, number one. But, uh, that was my initial thing. The, what they're talking about doing now with this T P O, when we had our meeting yesterday, that was the route that they really wanted to go as opposed to the standing seam in that middle, which is more expensive. And my thoughts were this, you guys do this for a living, whatever is the, the most economical way for Rankin County to, uh, prevent the water intrusion into the building that's gonna get us the longest wear life. That's the way we need to go in my mind. Uh, so this is between y'all and them, but one thing he didn't tell you about the T P O, they did the rating and we've got an R value of nine over that building right now, over the center room. With this T P O that they're gonna put on there, it jumps it almost three times to a R twenty-four, which is a huge, huge savings. Not to mention, we don't lose the building. If they go back with the standing seam, it's gonna have to be removed and the master gardeners and the sewing ladies and, uh, all those folks are, they'll be somewhere else in the parking lot because they can't be inside of the building. If you tell me to go tell them ladies they got to leave, I will, but I.
Not without backup.
Hey, Dwayne.
I don't wanna tell those ladies they gotta go, so.
On residential, we usually look for R thirty to R thirty-five, isn't it? Somewhere in there for the ceilings.
Not necessarily. It's probably a lot lower than that.
R twenty's been the traditional, but, but what, the reason why we can increase the R value is we, it'll have some ribbon insulation on it.
Yeah, I understand.
And, uh, we're doing all this in Rankin County schools and we, we, the energy code is kinda gray in that area. We just assumed that we have to do it there as a matter of, meet the code, but it also should, it should help with your energy efficiency and your utility loads. Now, I don't, I couldn't tell you and say y'all have a payback in two or three years.
Yeah.
Without running an, an analysis of it, but, uh, it's a good thing to do. It's simple. As Mike says, what we're trying to do, it'll be faster with the T P O because when, when leave the existing metal standing seam in place and then we just come on top of it. Now, we are gonna replace the other metal, the other, this building's in like three or four parts and I don't know whether it was all built together. It's, it's an interesting, uh.
I don't think so.
Uh, it's an interesting, uh, opportunity for us.
It appears to me that it was, I found, I found a set of prints, uh, that went back to nineteen ninety-two and it appears to me that you've got the, the two wings in the big room and then there was an addition to the little side room and then there was another addition to the back.
Yeah.
It appears to me that it's been added on to twice. So.
But what I go right now with this project is get rid of all the roof leaks and water penetration from the roof. The only thing that we don't really know, and I don't think there's a whole lot, is, you know, water penetration from some of the walls. We're looking, we're kinda looking at the stucco to make sure. But I'm sure when that was built, that's just a, a regular stucco, uh, as opposed to a drainable one that allows water to get out. But I don't think you've had any basic wall problems, have you, with water in walls?
Not that I'm aware of. We've had, I can show you water on the floor.
Yeah.
Um, just, I mean, it's just, it's just time to rehab. I mean, it's the, all the stuff and places.
So how long, Carl, is it gonna take y'all to finish the analysis?
The draw, we'll finish the drawings, if, on the way we're going in about three weeks and then we can, we can put it out for bids. You'll need another, you know, it'll take about thirty days once you advertise and then, you know, after that it'll take, the T P O can go on in like two weeks. So that's why I'm saying it may can be done in phases. We're gonna, where Vass might give us, uh, and we can find out what the days of election are.
I'll give it to him. I'll give it to him yesterday.
So we don't interrupt, you know, whatever you gotta do. So that's the only reason why we do it in phases. It, I don't think it will cost much more to do it in phases if that, if that causes the least amount of disruption. Normally, if you just do it all, you know, one bid and they mobilize, but I don't think with the way this is, I don't think that's, that's gonna be a cost factor. We'll find out. So it won't take long. We can get the T P O on in two weeks. Now, the rest of it, they've gotta order the standing seam metal. So most of the time on that's just gonna be getting the materials in.
So we're gonna be somewhere around October timeframe?
I, I'm right in the middle of these elections.
Yeah.
And that's what I gave them the dates on those yesterday. Um, I called yesterday and got the dates for that. Just because we can't, we don't need to mess that up. That's kind of election central on, uh, on election nights and, uh, we just, it's really precarious scheduling on that.
That's why we're thinking of going ahead and getting the T P O done because according to the, we met, we've met with several roofers. They have that material in stock. The metal roofing, they've gotta order and, you know, you gotta fabricate and all that kind of, so.
And I don't know what a T P O is or, or stove roof or.
It's a single, basically, it's a single membrane as opposed to.
Rubber membrane, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I feel fairly confident in saying that I, I don't, I don't foresee any hidden buried debris in our project at all.
You feel pretty confident in that?
I feel fairly confident in that.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
So that's kinda where we're at. And I, uh, I guess what I need today from you is, uh, if you've got any questions on the schedule or the prices, and then I've got those two change orders that I really need to get some action on. If y'all are comfortable.
So you asking for twenty-eight days today too?
Was.
That's what they're asking for.
Was the landscaping in the original contract or did we break that out?
We broke it out, uh, thinking we'd save some money, which we did. We didn't save as much as we thought we'd save. We saved only eight thousand dollars. We thought we were gonna save thirty or forty thousand.
Somebody told me a rumor that one of the, uh, landscaping bids had plants on there that would never survive in our, where, I mean, if somebody looked and make sure.
We did, we went back, we did. We went back and we revised that based on, uh, what we had was we had, we had one landscaper develop one thing. We went back to the original designer and he redesigned it and, uh, so.
Okay.
As long, as long as you've addressed it.
Yes, we have addressed that. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, there were some plants on there I'm not familiar with.
I'm not either, but I just.
So we went back to, uh, the landscaper did the original design. Uh, we were, again, we're, our, our original concept of taking it out, we thought we could save more money and.
So are they, are they asking for an extension to October one? Is that kinda what they're looking to do? They, realistically, do you think, assuming something significant does not come back up between now and then, they can hit that date?
I do think they're very, they can be very close to that. Uh, and we're.
Didn't you say that they're probably gonna come back and ask for more?
They're gonna be, they were held up with, on the corner site. Now, the question is how much, you know, they held up the exterior work and so we'll just have to look at them. I'm, I, that was not surprised me that they won't.
Carl, do you remember how many days we've towed, we've given them towed?
Yes, I do have. I actually have one.
I think we can make up my departure party at the same time, you know?
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Mr. Slay's got the, the Thanksgiving square. We're gonna be putting up squares for everybody else, uh, about the, uh, projected date. And we could use that money to kinda fill in the shortfall.
Thanksgiving this year or next year?
No, you're, now you're backing me in the corner.
Yeah. I didn't know, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty?
Yeah, they just put Thanksgiving.
You covering all the Thanksgivings as well? It's a car, how many days are we due?
Okay, the original contract was for five hundred and ninety days. You have given or have been approved, if you approve this change order, two hundred and forty-nine days of extension. Now, most of that's for rain weather. Uh, another seventy or eighty days is for this debris. There was two, sixteen days, you know, the city had a water break up there that, right when they were doing the foundation, that flooded their site and it took them a week to get the water turned off and it took another week to dry it out to where they could form the foundation.
We've given them almost a year?
Well, if you approve this in two hundred and forty-nine days, but you don't.
That's almost a year.
It is, but by contract, most of that is rain days and, uh, when I say rain days, that's not all the rain days. That's rain days over an inch, uh, or tenth of an inch.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we ain't had that many inches.
No. Well, last year, my understanding is last year was the second highest rain date in record.
Well, I, I would personally like to say October one is it. There is no more. Don't come back and ask for another day. As far as I'm concerned, I ain't backing them.
We can put that in.
All right, we have a motion. I'll second it. Now.
What are we motioning here?
Nah, I was, uh, we, we.
Gotta add it to the agenda, whatever we're gonna do, right, since we have our freaking action.
So what, what was the other change order that we need, uh, we need?
Well, the one was on the courthouse for the landscaping and the other one's on the misdemeanor for the washer and dryers and junction line.
I'd like to go ahead and make move of the change orders, but let's hold off on the, the, the completion date, you know, let's give it a little more time and see before we kinda draw that land, line in the sand that Jay walks drop, uh.
Be my choice.
Like, I'm not being generous, you know?
The twenty-eight, the twenty-eight days for the landscaping, why is that? I mean, how's that, why is that given to the contractor in a way?
Well, it's, they can't.
They can still be working during the time.
They can still be working. You're right, Jared. That, that's just, that was what their subcontractor quoted them with this price. And so they're just returning it. Now, will or not, they actually need all that? You're right. They can be working on outside.
Yeah, I don't see why they need twenty-eight days for the landscaper to put it in. There's plenty of things for them to do while the landscaper's working. Why did they get, why they riding on his coattail?
They're, I think their thinking is too, they're just, you know, they had, they got delayed by that city water line and that's about the same time it took the city to get that dug up and put back down.
Well, I'm not forgiving them twenty-eight days for the landscaper. If the landscaper couldn't get his done because it was raining or whatever, then he might need some more time. But I don't understand giving the contractor time for the landscaper to work.
Well, I, you know, I, you're, you're right. I can't, you make a good judgment there. They just, you know, they're trying.
They're just trying to buy more days always.
Yeah, that's part of it.
We giving them nothing. Won't we add this to the agenda? Go ahead. And then we'll take. I'll make a motion to add to the agenda. All right, we've got a motion by Jared to add these two items to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor adding these two motions, uh, for, uh, change orders to the agenda? Any opposed? Motion passes. They're on the agenda now. Now then, on the days of extension, twenty-eight days.
I thought we were gonna wait on it.
I think I'll wait. I think, I think you get into a legal, we need to ask Craig about some legal issues, where we're gonna end up if we start putting, you know, say this is it. If we're all gonna bow up and stuff, okay, what are, what are our consequences on after that? And if we wanna have that discussion now, that's fine.
Are you talking about for October, like he's saying, or for the twenty-eight days?
I'm talking about whatever date we decide to come up with.
No, you're talking about a date. Date. I'm talking about days. He said days. Particular, like if you're gonna give them extension or so many days. That's what he's saying, days.
I'm just saying, let's, let's don't address that at this point. Well, I don't know. I guess extension, yeah, I guess, I don't know.
I mean, they're, they're asking, uh, us today for an extension.
Twenty-eight days to get us to October one.
Well, I guess my question is, why do we need to make the decision with days today? They already got two hundred and something above the number already. We can make that decision on days at another time. Yeah, you got the feeling they gonna come back and ask for more with that. So I mean, just let them keep tacking in the room.
Usually days along.
I'm just saying, we, we can make that another point.
We ain't gonna hold the landscaper up at all.
They still working today, you know?
So what your motion would be to, to be to approve the change order, uh, excluding the request for an extension of the contract completion date?
Take that up at another point. We have two change orders?
Yeah.
Yes, one for the misdemeanor and one for the, uh.
Mister Mainer was the washing machines.
Yeah, I thought that was with the two you read.
All right. Do we have a motion, uh, to approve the change orders excluding the days requested, uh, for the landscaping?
So move.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion passes. Thank you, Carl. That was brief, wasn't it?
Well, Mike heard, got involved.
Yeah, that's fine. All right.
What about the, uh, Mr. Mainer?
That was a twenty minute.
We did them both.
We did them both, yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. That does not mean the twenty-eight days was granted. Right.
Right. I understand that.
Like I say, do that anytime.
Mr. President, the, my section of the, uh, of the meeting agenda is, uh, begins with a public hearing for Yates Construction Conditional Use Permit. One thirty-six Grantham Farm Road. It's District One. We'll open that public hearing. Conditional Use Permit, 136 Grantham Farm Road. It's District One. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here on behalf of Yates Construction, anyone here on behalf of Yates. Can you come forward, please? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Yates Construction Conditional Use Permit? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? If you'll come forward.
I'm not speaking in opposition to Yates.
Come up to the, come on up to us, sir.
If you will, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm Bud Pearson, owner of Pearson Dodo Service there in Florence. Been established in Rankin County for about 45 years. This area and location of this dirt pit, I have been operating out of it since 1982. We, Mr. Grantham is the owner of the grandfather clause that the pit was grandfathered in because it was established before in 89 when they started the licenses and the, the, the permit division of, of DEQ. Right now, as of today, I have been hauling dirt out of the pit since 1982. We are in compliance with DEQ. Mr. Ron Porter is an agent with DEQ. But what they've got us now, they've got me shut down, been shut down for roughly a month. Jared may be aware of this, for the rezoning. And they said that, of course, I'm not even in the, in the ball league with Yates Construction Company. I mean, they're talking about running roughly 100 trucks. We run four to five trucks and do local subdivision house lots. And I've got three in the Florence area as we speak that I've been held up for a month on waiting till we could get this problem dissolved. I, I, I'm kinda complaining, I reckon, but I, I mean, we're dead in the water. We got everything up to date except for the zoning on, for the, the trucking part of it. And I understand they, several compose of it, and I compose of, man, if I lived on White Road or in the subdivision down there, I wouldn't want trucks running by my house seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And, but anyway, the, my little, small operation is, is shut down until we can get something dissolved on this matter. And I would just like to be taken into consideration that if we could work something out, I mean, if, if we had to close a pit or that doesn't get it, give me a, amount of time to locate another area that I can get. Because you have to advertise for 30 days in the paper and all that kinda stuff. I need a few days if I need to get out of this pit that we could get ample time to establish another pit in the Florence area to accommodate my customers that's building new houses. Because our little old town is beginning to grow a little bit and we certainly don't want nothing to interfere with.
I agree, I agree. Bud, you just were kinda caught up in the, you just were kind of a victim of, of everything that went on.
Right.
So, I mean, no, nobody was, nothing was directed toward you. It's just you were unfortunately the one sitting there.
Right, I mean, I understand that. But I, you know, like I'm saying, it's, it's a whole lot different between a little operation like I'm running than a massive construction company comes in there, you know?
Craig, clear this up. He's talking about grandfathered in back from the 80s, but obviously, a change in operation and the new owner or new operator's not grandfathered. Is that why DEQ's?
That's correct, that's correct.
That's why they got shut down.
Yates is trying to get it permitted for up to date today. Since 1989, anything you open in the county or in the state, you have to be approved and have to, have to have permits.
I understand. I just, it was a change in management which made it not qualify for the grandfather.
And like I say, I was, we was grandfathered in, Mr. Grantham that owns the property, owns the land, is grandfathered in. And I was the operational manager of that pit to verify that the banks would be sloped and grassed and the fence, silk fence put up and hay bales and containment for the environmental control.
Yes, okay.
Thanks. So, but I, I still wanna do that, but if Yates moves in there and takes over the operation, I, but right now, we're dead in the water. And I've got some home owners.
You're saying if they move in there, you're out?
Right. But right now, I've been shut down for roughly a month waiting for this zoning and this creation. And I've got three houses going in the new subdivision at Saddle Ridge that I'm waiting on to try to get this thing worked out where we, I either got to go back to the, the builders and the landowners that's building a new house and say, look, I've got to haul this sand 10 miles further down the road and it's, it's gonna cost you more money. And I, I give them a price on doing their house lots and I hate to go back to them and balk on them to tell them I got to have more money. I mean, it's just, I just don't like the new business that way.
Craig's gonna address a lot of things here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bud.
I think the first thing that I wanna address before we even get into the hearing is, is just to correct for the record purposes and make sure that everybody's clear that Mr. Pearson was actually talking about two different things. One is the DEQ side of the permitting responsibility. The other is the county's zoning and conditional use obligations. Those are two different matters, two different sovereigns are involved in that. DEQ's process is a little bit later into the game. Well, our zoning is actually later in the game, but DEQ got ramped up on controlling dirt pit operations more aggressively at about the timeframe that he was describing. And, and so this pit may have been birthed at a point in time when there was no, or very little state mandated environmental quality regulation of any kind, but that, obviously, that's changed dramatically. At the time that this thing got birthed, it probably was designed to be what we refer to as an exempt mining operation. Those are pits that are four acres or less where DEQ essentially says, you know what, our regulations would normally apply, but since it's a small pit of four acres or less, we allow for what's called an exempt mining permit or an exempt mining operation. The requirements are much less than for a larger pit. This thing, however, has morphed into a dirt pit sizably larger than a four acre operation. So this is clearly controlled under DEQ's primary soil, primary excavation regulations. And we put a stop on consideration of the conditional use because we did not have confirmation from DEQ that they were actually regulating this property, this pit, in accordance with their regulations, okay? And so we got that confirmation. Renee led by explaining to you that she has now a certificate from DEQ that says they are in compliance. So that's a good first step for them as far as it relates to DEQ. Now, what we're here today to talk about is the conditional use side that the county regulates, which is essentially if you're gonna run a mining pit, whether it's an exempt mine or not, you've got to get a conditional use. Our zoning ordinance says if you're operating a dirt mine in Rankin County, you can do it in any zoning context as long as this board has heard the matter, has heard from any citizens that wanna speak on the matter, and the board has had an opportunity to establish any conditions that go with that operation. And so that's what we're doing today. So now that we're clear about why we're here, I'll ask again, is there anybody else here that's speaking in opposition to the conditional use request that's before the board? Anybody else in opposition to it?
I don't think, I don't think, I think Bud was in opposition.
Well, he's, he's getting going.
Yep, yep. I understand. I just wanna make sure Mr. Bud came when I asked for opposition and I wanna make sure that anybody that's actually opposing this has an opportunity to speak.
Well, I think Mr. Bud did have an opposition that these trucks not be running all night and through subdivision, I mean, that kinda thing. I think he was alluding to putting some hours restricted.
Absolutely, absolutely. Completely understand that. All right. So, gentlemen with Yates is here. In the event that you have any questions specifically of the contractor that's asking for this conditional use on behalf of the landowner, do, does anybody have any questions? We have conditions to provide to you, to talk with you about, but if you have any questions of the applicant, now would be the time to ask.
Yeah, I have some.
Okay, if you'll come forward, please.
How, how long you think it's gonna take to finish it up?
Finish it up, this piece of property?
Yeah.
49 is gonna be a few more years.
Oh.
But as far as this piece of property, there's about three and a half acres on it that's left to be mined. You're roughly looking at maybe two months' worth of work, provided it wouldn't rain and.
You're not gonna move four acres here and another four acres?
No.
This four acres does this property?
That's right. And it doesn't actually have four acres left on it. It's close, close to three and a half.
So you're saying that once this is dug out, there's no more dirt to dig on this property?
There's plenty of dirt to dig, but according with DEQ's laws, you have to be 1,450 feet away from any prior dirt pits or exemptions. And as he was saying, they have been digging there since the 80s. I don't know how much was grandfathered in, how much wasn't, because I'm the one that's went and redone the permits. But there's nowhere you can get on that piece of property again and dig and be outside of where they've already worked.
I guess that's what I'm trying to say here.
Yeah, after this.
So you're saying after you dig this three and a half acres, the pit's closed?
Yes.
Is that correct? I mean, I, Roger?
That is correct.
So I mean, Bud, basically, well, y'all will get a chance to say something in a minute, because I'm trying to get clarity here because this is the first I've heard of that.
Yeah.
Well, he said according to DEQ's guidelines that there's no more dirt to be mined.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It's the first I've heard of this.
Once that, once that permit is closed out, you cannot open another pit within a quarter mile of any, of an existing or closed out pit.
So that's what I'm saying. So once this is dug out, this pit will be non-existent. Is that what, that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
I mean, that, that's so you won't dig anymore on this whole land?
That's DEQ guideline.
Well, DEQ's guidelines, all right, but I mean, okay. So that means anybody that was digging on there or any dirt, actually, I need, I need, I've not heard this, so I need to hear this from, that you, that you understand this, Roger, and you understand it, Bud. Butch, I mean, so you're saying once we, once you leave this pit, then there won't be any more trucks going up there ever again?
No, I don't know how many acres he owns total.
Okay, that's what's confusing me. So they could reopen more of the land?
It would ta, it would take a, a major permit and someone have to put forth a whole bunch of money to open. They'd have to, they would have to take the responsibility of what Mr. Bud has done since 1982 and, and all the way to this present day and then keep going with it. It would, it would cost someone a tremendous amount of money.
Well, I'm, I'm not. If we looked at four months with what you're asking, you're saying it shouldn't take more than two unless it gets raining?
Right.
Four months, if we cut it off, then you'd have to come back to us and that would satisfy your request?
It would.
And by giving you two extra months, maybe we could talk into not running those trucks at night?
I, I never had any intentions on. I know someone just said we run 100 trucks. We run, there'll never be more than 15 trucks running.
A day?
In a day.
Aw, now, come on.
Out of that pit, the pits.
You ain't telling, you're not telling me that now. I've seen the trucks run. I've seen your trucks.
Yeah, out on the highway.
Okay.
But that, that's too many. You can't put all those trucks in one pit. That just doesn't make sense.
Well, you've been doing it.
Where at?
Uh, down at Star?
Star, yeah, that's much, much bigger room.
I'm just saying, though, don't, don't tell me you haven't been running 15 trucks.
Well, that's.
You've been running more than 15 trucks out of Star?
Oh, yeah, we have, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Can I step in? Let me bring a little clarity to the question. So what Yates has done, I'm assuming it's Yates, whomever has been dealing directly with DEQ for the purpose of this particular operation that we're here talking about today, the Highway 49 project, the applicant has gone to DEQ and has provided to DEQ an application for an exempt mine certificate.
Oh.
Which by its terms is limited to not more than four acres, all right? So what you're being told is that once whatever is left to be mined out of the area that was described as the four acres in this pit, once that has left, then in order for another four acre exempt mine operation to come in there, it has to qualify under DEQ's regulations, which means they gotta get far enough away from the current four acre site. They gotta get far enough away from it. And if they've got room on their property to do that, they might be able to secure another four acre exempt mine permit. The alternative that they have, since there's quote more dirt on it, but they've been operating this thing as a little pit and then another little pit and then another little pit for 30-plus years. Because they've been doing it that way and DEQ is now aware of it, they've got to take this from a tiny four acre exempt mine operation to a full-blown pit operation, which would be whatever the total amount of the acreage is. And that's a totally different set of regulations, a totally different set of requirements that DEQ has. And this is what this gentleman was explaining. You probably can operate a pit out of that, but not without a significant responsibility on the front end of time, energy, effort, applications, engineering and analysis, establishment of how you're gonna control the stormwater on the site, who's going to reclaim the site. All of that stuff comes in once you get outside the four acre process. So are we clear on, on what's happening here?
Yes, sir.
And why it's limited this time a little bit? They're taking the, they're taking the poor man's route to try to get access to the dirt, to the dirt that, that is there. And the truth of the matter is, there may not be but about two acres left to get dirt out of this thing. The site that they've chosen?
Yeah.
Dwayne, roughly two acres?
There was 1.8 acres left to mine according to DEQ.
According to DEQ.
Well, that won't take you long to dig that out, will it?
It won't. And another plus for us is the, one that's 49 job, it's become so much undercut, it's no good dirt that has to be hauled off. And because they've been digging there so long, we can level off a hole that he has out there and put it back with level ground and grass it for Mr. Grantham.
Good deal.
All right.
So it helps us on both.
So what hours do you want to do?
Typically, our daytime shift starts at 7:00 in the morning. Normally, we're signed out no later than 7:00 in the evening. It just depends on the day, but our nighttime shift will always start in between 7:00 and 9:00. So day, day shift's done by then. And we will not run any.
Is this gonna interfere with school traffic?
Yes, all of this, if, if I may, gentlemen, it may be helpful to us. Can I just work through the conditions?
Yeah, but I wanna hear, but I wanna hear some input from the pit owner and these guys sitting back here that have raised their hands already.
Right. So why don't I just work through these conditions and then we'll ask these guys after they hear the conditions, it may change something that they wanna say or talk about, Jared. So let me work through these conditions for you guys. This is what the staff has come up with, ask conditions in conjunction with talking with the City of Florence, their officials. And so we have some recommendations. And Tim Parker, I have Tim Parker here as well, who is prepared to go over some additional, one additional condition that we need to talk about. And so because this is a heavily trafficked school route, this may not impact, since we don't have school in session now and it sounds like that this operation's gonna be completed on a fairly quickly turn, on a fairly quick turnaround. But we will have school coming up in early August, and so I wanted, we wanted to address that. If school is in session, then the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with a break, and then they can pick back up from, after 2:00 p.m., they can pick up at 4:00 p.m. and go until 6:00 p.m., okay? If school is not in session, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00, all right? Saturday is 7:00 to 4:00. No hauling on Sundays at all.
Wait, back up again.
Yeah, I said that wrong.
If school is not in session?
8:00 to 2:00. We shut it at 2:00.
If school is not in session?
I'm sorry, if school is in session, it's 8:00 to 2:00. And on Saturday, it's 7:00 to 4:00, okay? If school is not in session, it's 8:00 to 4:00, and Saturday is 7:00 to 4:00.
That makes sense.
I don't care about that on Sunday, Saturday. Let's leave it 8:00 all the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll change Saturday then from 8:00 to 4:00.
I think that difference in that hour is so that people going to work will already be passed. Yeah, well, school traffic will be, yeah. On Monday through Friday, and most people don't go to work on Saturday. And school traffic will be gone through there, because honestly, I, I mean, and so you're only gonna open it up for like, for two hours? Are you gonna go start back at 4:00 or 4:00? No, he, no, just straight to 2:00.
Straight 8:00 to 2:00 on school days.
Right.
Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 2:00 if school is in session. If school is not in session, it's 8:00 to 4:00. That's Monday through Friday. Saturday's gonna be 8:00 to 4:00. No Sunday hauling, period. At the discretion of the road manager, the applicant will provide adequate security in Rankin County to repair any damage to county public roads and/or state aid roads caused by hauling activity. We'll let Tim speak to that momentarily. That sounds in the nature of law. Work with the county road manager concerning all ingress, egress areas at the site of the pit. So where you've got the trucks coming out and turning, you're gonna have some, some shoulder work that's gotta be taken care of. You've got some ramps that have to be dealt with. The next one is they have to have a flagman on duty when the pit's in operation. Absolutely a must. They gotta keep. on duty when the pit's in operation. Absolutely a must. They gotta keep a water truck on site. They have to keep the road free and clear of all debris on a daily basis, so if they're tracking mud, tracking debris, it's gotta be off the road on a daily basis. And the conditional use permit will expire when the Highway forty-nine project is deemed substantially completed. So I don't think that's gonna matter here. Again, we found out some new information here.
Wait, you're saying expire when it's completed?
Yes, sir.
That's four or five years.
Yeah, that's four or five years.
Put four months on it. Four months.
We can put a timeframe on it, so it's...
Not to exceed four months.
Okay.
I don't know, hang on a minute.
Just hang on before you say it.
You putting them all kinda chop times in here? You can't put on a four-month time limit, you know?
He wanted to.
Well, that's if he used to work all the time. Now, we don't tie their hands.
We cut him back and give him twice as much time. I want some, I wanna hear some input. You go ahead, and I want feedback.
Before we get there?
I can't dig.
I, I need to, I need to get some sort of consensus on how long the conditional use permit will be valid.
I'd say four months.
I need some consensus on that.
December?
Twelve months from the date of issuance.
Twelve months?
Four months.
I said the date of issue.
Oh, end of the year, I'm sorry.
I'm sure, yeah, end of the year, December.
They put in their application that it would be estimated to end by five-one of twenty, so they didn't expect it to go longer than that.
Wait, I missed something. What?
The application says they estimated their mining operation would end by May of twenty.
Coincide with that.
If that's an application for a DEQ...
That's the application for the conditional use permit. That was submitted.
There's a lot of times we'll extend that date because we have to have time to have grass growing. And that's why we're normally doing a year outside of what we're doing there.
Craig, with the acreage that's left to mine, if they're running full scale, they could be done in less than a month.
And, and we're not telling them they cannot bring in the bad soil and dump it. This is just the coming out. So after you get the dirt out of there...
But you're still, the road's still gonna be covered. You still have to have the road covered.
Right, I understand that, but I'm talking, our conditional use is on how long you're gonna be bringing dirt out, right?
It's, it's the mining operation is what is being permitted, Steve. So I would submit to you that it includes the reclamation activity, the installation of spoiled dirt from the job site. That's included in this.
That could be, that could go on for a long time.
So May of twenty sounds good.
Little side. I'm not, you write it down, I'm not sure yet.
Okay. We'll put May one, twenty twenty. That's our holding date at this point. Okay? Do y'all want to hear from Ms. Parker about the...
I do.
In talking with the city, they were interested in requiring a bond on portion of the city, and I think the county has expressed an interest in doing the same thing on the county portion. And the development ordinance has provisions for that. There's a form, and I think it's the last exhibit in the county's development ordinance that sets out how you figure the haul bond. And there's some blanks that we'll have to fill in, and I'm not sure exactly what their route is now, and those kinds of things.
You basically saying cover the route?
Right, yes, sir. So we could, we would establish a haul bond route, we have, establish the route, and then, like I said, it's just some simple calculations, some blanks to fill in, how wide the roads are, the length of it. If we, you know, if there's gonna be some base repair involved, we suspect, I mean, that would be the issue, whether turning in and out, we'll have to do some calculations there. But it's all set out in a spreadsheet in the development ordinance, so it'd be pretty simple to calculate the amount of bond.
Did you say the words haul bond and haul routes and stuff?
I have used those words.
Phew.
Just for you, Mr. Daniel.
I was just saying if you were paying attention, that's what originally you...
Well, they lost me.
I had to get you back in game.
They lost me about forty-five minutes ago, but when you brought that back up, I'm back, I'm back with us now. Whoo. The haul bond stuff.
That's the best state of words.
That's bad language. Surely we don't have that stuff in Rankin County, do we, anymore?
Alright, I, okay. Now, I'd like to hear, I mean, there was some questioning, head shaking and nodding back before, I'd like to hear what the, hear some of that, hear what it's about.
Thank you, Tim.
If somebody, if somebody wants to speak on something?
I do.
Okay. Come on up here.
I'm going up to the microphone.
Come on up here.
My name is Leon Dutton, I live in Florence. I have a dirt pit not too far from Mr. Pearson. I'm already having issues. I have to haul my dirt five or six miles further around due to some rules and regulations that's in place, and I do that. But what they've done now, they've let this man here get run out of business for a month. I tried to do business with him to shorten my haul route, it's hurt me too. Now, this young man with Yates back here don't know me, but back in the early nineties, we did a lot of trucking for Yates Construction on all the casinos in Tunica. And if you think anybody in this room thinks they gonna run fifteen trucks, they're not gonna do it. They're gonna run wide open, and they're gonna push every button they can. They're not gonna show none of those people up and down that road any respect. It's all about Yates Construction. And you've got an issue coming into Florence that are at the cemetery. Which way you gonna route those tractor trailers?
That's what we got inside.
Right. Me and Mr. Pearson can try to turn and go behind the cemetery, well, one load, will get stopped and get threatened, be road ticketed. That's the safest route to do it, rather than coming up to the post office and turning. What are y'all gonna do about that, Jerry? Oh, y'all, y'all in control?
Do, do about what?
Are y'all gonna control him from turning behind the cemetery? Or y'all gonna make him come up there and a bad turn with those...
Part of that's gonna be, that's gonna be something to work out with Florence, as far as where they're gonna, that's, that's into city limits. That's gonna be that. And I think that's the reason they're talking about some kind of bond to cover the road. I don't know if they'll even let them go that way. That's, that's what's all gotta kind of still be decided, if we do this. So, I mean, I, I can't answer, answer that really. But I certainly, I wanted you to say something, because those are things that think to look at. My guess is they're not gonna go down the cemetery. That road won't ever hold them up.
No. White Road's not gonna hold them. White Road ain't gonna hold them.
Well, that's the reason they're gonna have to...
But what other, what other route can you make them take?
They'll have to go to White Road and take a right at the cemetery, and not go by the cemetery at the back.
Where are they gonna go then?
Or, uh, well, I don't know. I'm assuming they're gonna go left and go up through town. I don't know. That's what we gotta work out. The city, that's gonna be the city's deal right there.
Okay. Well, this is all I'm gonna ask. Can y'all resolve this fairly reasonable, quick, where that man can either know he's, can operate, or I can buy material from him to help my customers in Florence?
The problem is, the problem it sounds to me like, though, is we're gonna need the rest of the input, because if it's opened up, you won't be hauling out of there.
Well, if Yates gets their permit, they putting that man out of business. He's got to go do whatever he's got to and go hunt whatever he wants to, to take care of his business. And little people like me and him...
So, but that's where, you know, I can't, we can't say who can, if the landowner, here's the landowner's input, because we can't tell him, he can't let one, but he's gonna have to let the other one.
Well, that's true. We all understand that.
I mean, that's, I mean, if we make a decision, he's gotta be a part of that decision. If he says, no, I want, I want these to be able to keep hauling out of there, then that's a different deal. But if he's saying, I want to go and clean it out, I mean, I can't really tell him he can't open it. If we, if we're gonna let it be open, I can't say you can only open it if Bud's gonna haul out or Butch gonna haul out. I mean, I don't think you see that.
We all understand that. But what about all those people up and down White Road? Would you want that mess going by your house?
I agree with you, and that's the reason we haven't...
Yates sorta had their ducks in a row before they ever bid the job, know where they're gonna get their material. And this factor of, well, we gotta dig a bunch of dirt out we didn't anticipate, that's not your problem, it's not these people that live on White Road's problem.
I agree with you. The sensitive situation is you want, just like you are hauling, is you want to be both, to please both parties in that you want you to be able to haul, you want to be able to haul and, and go to these sites where you, you're working. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of, and you want the guy that has the dirt to be able to sell it. So it's really a sensitive deal, and, and pleasing both, both sides. I mean, it, it's a tough thing.
Here's the thing, they gonna shove this job down, those people on White Road, and when Yates gets what they want, they go on and to heck with the people on White Road.
Well, that's why we're gonna look at these, I, I have a problem with the number of trucks they're saying they're gonna use too. I really do. I tell you that. I don't, I don't ever think it'd be fifteen trucks.
They're not gonna operate that job on fifteen trucks a day. I know that, you know that. Thank you.
I can see it.
Thank you.
Alright. I'd like to hear, I actually like to hear from the, the landowner. And Bud, unless you've got something else to say? Or representing the landowner.
While he's coming, let me make it clear as well, that the applicant may be Yates, but the site is Grantham, alright? So if Mr. Grantham decides he wants Mr. Pearson to have access to that dirt, knock himself out as long as the pit is being operated in accordance with the conditions that you've set. So if Mr. Pearson can run in there ahead of the Yates folks and get him a load, and get out of there, and do it within the time frames that are established, we don't have an issue with that.
Well, that's what I, that was my question.
Absolutely.
And, you hear that?
Absolutely.
Bud, that was my whole, my whole thing. If, if he's gonna just say, boom, it's just for Yates, and you can't haul, and I can't help it if it gets dug out.
Yeah, but the county doesn't pick winners and losers. If Mr. Grantham wants to restrict it to just Yates, he's welcome to do that. It's his pit. What you guys are looking at is, how is that pit gonna be operated regardless of who's coming out of there? How is it gonna be operated? And you are considering hours of operation restrictions, and so all of the hauling activity will have to fall within those hours of operation restrictions. There won't be any hauling on Sunday at all if the board chooses to, you know, to invoke these restrictions. The road manager and the consulting engineer will put their heads together with the pit owner, and will make it clear that in order for those trucks to come in and out of there, there will be a bonding requirement. We don't care who puts it up, but there's a bonding requirement that will come for that pit, the operations out of that pit during this timeframe.
I'll ask you, do we, do we make other dirt pit owners put bonds up?
We haven't, at this, at this level of discussion, no, sir.
So why aren't we treating this company or individually indifferent, and we do everybody else?
Because we're hauling a whole lot more vehicle trucks down here.
And, and a...
You're not familiar with where they're coming.
It's four acres. It's White Road, State A Road.
State A, that's right. A, we're the ones that fix it.
That was where we were putting all our vehicles on.
Huh?
Saying White Road won it, never mind.
A part of the haul route also includes a significant portion of the city of Florence.
Correct.
And the city of Florence has requested...
Well, they should put a bond on it, but that don't mean we need to do it.
Well, the application is in front of us, and it just so happens that the route goes through the city. So the, in order to control the work, the job site, they've come to us, I think appropriately so, city, the city of Florence has come to us and said, please help us protect our city streets, okay? It's just par for the course on getting from this pit to the job site has got to go that way. And so, I think the answer to your question, why are we looking at this for this particular site, is the unique circumstances that we have a request from the city to help protect their streets. That's the short answer to it. But at any rate, there's a bonding requirement that is under consideration. Y'all have to get comfortable with how that is supposed to work. There's also a flagman requirement, a water truck requirement, and a cleaning of the debris off of the roadway on a daily basis and a potential expiration. So with that, I'll turn it over.
I'm Roger. Excuse me. I'm Roger Grantham. My dad, E. W. Grantham, owns the place. And what he just said right at the end made a lot of sense to me, as far as Bud and, you know?
Butch.
Yates coming in, I mean, that sense. There's plenty of dirt, there's plenty of dirt there.
Well, now, if it's only acre and a half, I don't understand. He said it's only acre and a half dirt, so that totally confused me. I thought it was...
No, it's a four-acre stretch. It's a hill, and it's roughly, roughly four acres.
Hold on just a second. Let's, let's get squared up again.
Yeah.
There are two pieces to this puzzle. One is, one is the DEQ piece. Yates, and on behalf of Grantham, went to DEQ and said, we would like an exempt mine permit. And that means this four-acre piece is what we're talking about. DEQ has looked at the four-acre piece and has said, y'all can operate your exempt mine out of that four-acre slice. There may be other dirt all over this site, Jared, but the only thing DEQ has permitted, and therefore the only thing that we, as the county, under our stormwater management plan, can allow them to operate out of, is what they told DEQ that they want to operate out of. And what you're, what Dwayne has told you is that the four-acre piece that they told DEQ they're gonna pull out of actually only has one-point-eight acres of usable material that can come out of that.
So they're gonna go all this trouble for one-point-eight acres?
They, they decided, what's the fastest, simplest, cheapest way that we can get clearance from DEQ? And that was to pick out a four-acre piece and work on that. And that's what Yates chose to do, and that's all that we're here dealing with. And I wanna make, I wanna make sure that Mr. Grantham understands.
I think it's also a place for spoiled dirt to go.
I understand, but then, but I, I don't think you're clear on that, although, Roger, because he's saying it's only acre and a half, you're saying there's a whole lot more.
And, and what, what, what Mr. Grantham needs to understand and understand very clearly, is that the fastest way to get yourself in trouble with DEQ is to allow a pit operation to be outside of that four-acre slice.
And so it's only acre and a half?
Exactly. There better not be any dirt coming out of that site that's not out of that four-acre piece that DEQ has cleared. There better not be any dirt. Okay? That's not a Rankin County thing, that's a DEQ thing. And if Mr. Grantham wants to sell any dirt in the future, then he needs to stay on the straight and narrow with DEQ at all costs. And the next time they want to get dirt from some other spot that's not the four-acre slice, they need to go back to DEQ and make sure that that other area is far enough away from this area or other operations in that pit. They need to get all of the regulations clear with DEQ so that they can get another exempt mine operation permit. So the process needs to be this. Get squared up with DEQ, tell them where you want to operate, and then come see the county about a conditional use. That's the way this has to work. And don't haul out of a pit that, that cannot establish that they have a clear permit from DEQ to operate. Just don't do it. If we can get that word out, the more we can get that out to dirt haulers, the better off we'll all be. Because DEQ will be complied with, and the county will be complied with. We'll have, we'll be able to track where all this stuff is going on. Okay?
Alright, so, so Roger, you understand, just a minute, Butch. You understand it's only acre and a half they're actually gonna be able to haul off of?
I do now.
I mean, yeah, that's what just makes me wonder, why are we going to all this trouble for an acre and a half? That's my front yard. Bless my, yeah, that's my, bless you, yeah. So is this something you, you want to do for...
With that four acre, that acre and a half, is there something about, is that gonna be enough dirt?
No.
Not completely done. No, not completely, I would say.
So, I mean, I mean, is this really go through all this...